On the original one that he gave you? They're his, and I changed them.
All right, calling toward the regular meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency, and the West Sacramento Financing Authority on September 17th will start tonight. Actually, we'll report out, we had a closed session, city attorney, please report out for that.
Thank you, yes. The successor agency met in closed session to confer with its real property negotiator concerning the Stone Lock property. There was direction given to staff to take actions consistent with the direction that was received from the Oversight Board at its September 11th meeting.
Thank you very much.
And the city council met in closed session to confer with its labor negotiator concerning the city manager. No action was taken on that item. And also, the city council met to consider public employee evaluation. Again, the city manager, no action was taken.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll start tonight with the pledge allegiance. Chief McDonald, would you lead us?
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're at Agenda Item A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. And just as admonishment, the council at this time is prohibited from discussing issues not on the agenda brought at this time. According to state law, according to state law, under the Brown Act, actually, items must be agendized before we can enter the discussion. So I do not see any items to speak on item number one, going to council communications. Are there any council communications any members wish to report?
Yes, last Thursday, the West Sac- SAFCA JPA met, and the main item of discussion was the item that is on our agenda today. The agenda item number... It's the, it's agenda item number seven, which is the general re-evaluation report. And our flood management team will be explaining that particular agenda item tonight. So I, there's no sense in really going through it. And so, but that was the main item that we had as far as the JPA was concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Mr. Lee Desmond?
Thank you. On September 8th, we had a meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District. It was a relatively short meeting, but we did hear an update. Mr. Lowell was present as well with me, got an update on the forward-facing flip sheet, flip seat issue that they've been trying to resolve for the past couple of months. And they came up with a resolution that they'll be retrofitting some seats to make them more safe. So that was really the only update consequence. We did also, I should point out that they will be evaluating for local, for local YOLO bus users. We are, the Transportation District will be looking at any impacts from the entertainment and sports arena construction to the routes. There were some concern voiced by one member of the audience about some impact to the routes. So thank you, Mr. Lowell, for bringing that to our attention. But we did ask staff to come back and make sure our residents are well aware of any kind of impacts to routes, lateness, or whatever else. So we're looking for that in the next meeting, next, in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Endy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem Jansen. I attended the Water Resources Association Board of Directors meeting this past Monday. The most significant item, I think, that came before us was support for Proposition 1, which is the Water Quality, Supply, and Infrastructure Act of 2014, which will be on the November ballot. We also, also, as Mr. Kristoff mentioned, we heard Flood Protect update, and we'll hear more about that, I believe, in our, in our meeting tonight. But that the report's complete on the website in the next issue being researched and worked on is Integrated Water Management Plan. We also talked about a, an act from Legislature, groundwater legislation update called Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It was passed on August 29th of this year, and it will put into action work about providing local groundwater agencies with authority and technical and financial assistance to develop sustainable groundwater actions. And that will come forward to, to us and all agencies that, that have, that are dealing with groundwater management issues. So I believe that's, those are the highlights from that meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Leslie?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And Mayor Protem Jahan, see me out that helped me on this report. But I did attend the Streetcar Policy Steering Committee, which was held, I want to say it was last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday, in Sacramento at CACOG. There were a couple of really important agenda items in that. One is, the most important one had to do with providing a conceptual, over, conceptual framework for future governance of the, of the streetcar, which in essence, the board, the Policy Steering Committee agreed that we should be going to a governance system that includes the private sector partners for, create in essence, a separate nonprofit organization that would provide a day-to-day maintenance and governance and decision-making as, once the streetcar is built. But it also established a joint powers authority, or a separate joint powers authority, a different type. Remember the exact name of the JPA. But it was one in which would allow the initial powers and authority to be held between the city of Sacramento and the city of West Sacramento to establish the framework for the governance. And so it was a very robust debate, discussion around that. We needed the framework in order to put our application into the federal project pipeline. We agreed only upon a concept. The action item was left out of that discussion was around the beginning, a subcommittee, which would include Mayor Cabaldin, it would include council member Steve Hansen, and facilitated by CACOG, and include some of the private sector partners. But to begin ironing out kind of what the governance structure would be. So there's a lot of work, where the rubber's starting to meet, meet the road on this project, or further along into that work stream. But the important part is coming up in terms of our ability to, how we're going to frame the governance structure of this, of this entity. So anything else to add? And you're there, Mr. Mayor Protem as the alternate?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, really, this project is really becoming very real to a lot of people. A lot of people that are going to have to pay for it, private sector and public sector. And so this governor, governance issue is really starting to come into play on, and who's contributing money, who has what say in, in the whole progress. But I think the tone of it was, you know, was, it was a fair, fair debate. I'm sure we're going to be working through this. I think one of the concerns is we see the timeline slipping a little bit. And so, you know, a lot of that is just the nature of these grant applications. But I know the folks on the Streetcar Committee are really focused on, on getting this done, getting it done timely, and, and really, working with the stakeholders, which is kind of where we're at right now, because we're looking at who's contributing what to this. Over two cities, districts are very different. And so when people start talking about money, it's, it naturally become contentious. But it's, I think it's moving in the very right direction.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, our council appointments, reappointments, removes from city or non-city boards and commissions. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I see staff has recommended pulling item four. So are there any items, any council members would like to pull for discussion or a motion?
I'd like to pull item five, please.
Okay. Any others?
We pulled, I had a question on four, so that's fair enough.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. So item number five, this is the SAS report on the UP, Universal Preschool West SAC, future proposed vision and objectives. Ms. Endy?
Yes, I was, I was hoping that we might be able to hear from staff person Justine Jimenez. We've worked on this report, and it's a chance for the council to give feedback and hear about the program. And I was hoping, Ms. Jimenez, if you could, could speak a little bit about the needs of our community with regard to the universal preschool program and expanding it, and the future vision, and then prospects for future funding for the program.
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening. And we are in the midst of a very exciting time right now. We've sort of been riding the wave of everything's been going down, down, down for the last several years. And now we're seeing early learning, challenge grants, and a lot of different things happening at the state and federal level. So we can be extremely proud of the fact that with Up for West SAC, we've set a really solid base in our community for a lot of the things that are, are being looked at in terms of expansion, for more opportunities for early learning. In fact, some of the, the things that we are looking at, you know, today, we, we got an invitation to apply to be a, one of the high need communities, so a sub-grantee for a state grant that's being applied for, which could be up to 35 million for the state of California to improve and expand on preschool opportunities. Additionally, we are one of the few counties that, when we were given the opportunity to, were able to start including our infant and toddlers in our previously just preschool programs. Our program does really encompass zero to five-year-olds now. We work with the zero to three population, and work with improving quality, and helping to connect families to full-day childcare for the, for that age, which is a really important thing. And this is one of the things that we hear the most often when we are approached by people from the community, you know, that they need high-quality childcare for their infants and toddlers. So really, when we're looking at the report, you know, we wanted to highlight the fact that there will be an upcoming event on the 29th of September, that's a Monday, that'll be a luncheon. And we, we hope that you'll all be able to be there to celebrate with us. This will be the local celebration of the City Livability Award that was awarded to Up for West SAC for cities of 100,000 and less in June in, in Dallas. So this will be our, our local celebration. I think it'll be a really good time. Just hope everybody can come to that. Additionally, as you can see, we have an early learning services proposed future vision. And I guess some of the things that we'd like to hear from the council is if there is any comment or any ideas for us in terms of how we want to expand. And look at this, obviously, we're not asking for additional funding from them, from the city for this. We're looking for ways to partner with local, federal, and state opportunities so that we can expand the program that we have here. And some of the ways that we'd like to make changes or be able to bring more opportunities to our community is by expanding half-day programs that are currently out there for, for children to full day. This is one of the high needs in this community. Families need full-day care for their young children because often both parents are working. Limiting class sizes and improving child-to-staff ratios, looking at ways to connect our community college, our high school, to, you know, lab schools, potentially having children who are attending high school, and then students in our community college who can connect to career pathways. So these are all our visions and all of our, and essentially, you know, I think everything is here in the report, but I just wanted to point out, you know, just in terms of the, the statistics that we've included in here, we just really have a lot to be proud of in terms of how much the program has achieved. And I believe that is the reason that we received the City Livability Award. So we just would welcome your comments or guidance. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, Justine, thanks for, thanks for the update, and to our chairperson, council, I'm sorry, council member Sandeep for leading the group. And this is my, I think, the first opportunity I've had in public to congratulate you, and thank you for your service for the livability awards. Tremendous achievement for our city and for, for your team, the team and the, at the Up for West SAC program. So thank you. And looking at, this is a question on the Early Learning Services Proposed Future Vision. And in there, you lay out some, some, I think some, just kind of where you're looking to, opportunities to expand, or...
Yes.
And it said a question, and maybe you can just clarify, on the last one, promote career development and work-based learning opportunities in early childhood education through. And particularly, I'm trying to understand what, what you envision in that particular section of how that might work, or how that might...
Well, we, yeah, thank you. We have a lot of interest from definitely people on the school board and at the district in finding ways. You know, there's a lot more talk about this career development and career pathways, career technical training programs. There isn't one in, in early education. That is something that we could look at and explore. So that's something that we are interested in. Additionally, the, again, working with a community college, we currently do not have a lab school, meaning a school where the, the students who are taking early childhood education courses can come and observe mentor teachers who are, who are working with children. So this would be another possibility to expand in that way.
So bringing the students into the actual classroom where they can actually have hands-on experience?
Yes.
Okay. I think those are both terrific opportunities, because obviously, the college is right there, which has been successful. And so if there are opportunities to further that, absolutely, whatever we can do to do that. So, no, thank you again. This has been, this is a terrific update.
Any other questions?
Other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, we have the consent agenda then. Is there a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. All on paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? None? Okay. All right, item seven, it's a presentation on the West Sacramento General Reevaluation Report and the Lower Sacramento Delta North Regional Flood Management Plan in consideration of Resolution 1447, supporting the RFMP and the Continued Planning Level Effort Toward Implementation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. The flood program has reached a couple of significant milestones recently. One on the General Reevaluation Report, and another on the Regional Flood Management Plan. And tonight, we have two presentations on these items. The first is an update on the West Sacramento General Revaluation Report that we will be presented by Alicia Kirchner, Chief of Planning for the US Army Corps of Engineers. And followed on her heels will be a second presentation, which is an update on the Lower Sacramento Delta North Regional Flood Management Plan, presented by Eric Nagy of MBK Engineers, who is the lead project delivery team member for Flood Protect, which is the project delivery team. And then finally, as you mentioned, included with this item is Resolution 1447, requesting council's support for continued planning level effort of the Flood Protect team towards implementation of the recommendations of the regional plan. So I'd like to bring up Alicia Kirchner for the General Revaluation Report.
Good evening again. My name is Alicia Kirchner with the Corps of Engineers, providing an overview tonight of our partnering efforts, working with SAFCA and the state of California to investigate flood risk to the city, existing flood risk to the city, as well as identify and evaluate potential solutions that we could implement together to address those, those issues. Part of my job with the Corps is to shepherd these types of studies through the federal process, and periodically come in and update our partners in terms of the status. So that's really what I'm here to do tonight, is to let you know where we are currently with the study, to reflect on some recent milestones that Greg mentioned, outline the next steps, and, and then also sort of talk about how it sinks in, our current activities sink in with the regional planning effort. So really, just to quickly recap, again, the cost shared agreement we entered into with SAFCA, and then ultimately, the state of California was about in the 2009 timeframe. And we've been in the study phase since that point in time. We've had to adjust the scope of our investigation to respond to some evolving, emerging federal policies that govern how the Corps conducts studies. That's, was the focus of my last briefing to you all, I think it was in January of 2013. Once we got through those rescoping efforts, I would say the study really was able to focus on really advancing through our planning process. That consisted of, you know, we did some, some early public scoping, we did our rescoping in accordance with our policies that were evolving. And then it really came down to, okay, we've identified the, the nature of the flood risk, and we're able to concentrate on identifying some alternative solutions to be able to look at reducing flood risk. We have then gone through the process of presenting to our Corps headquarters the tentative recommendation for a solution to flood risk that we are contemplating. Got their agreement that we had sufficiently identified alternative plans to reduce the problems that we'd identified, and got their agreement that it was okay to move on to the next step, which, and this is part of that new federal process evolution, we go through concurrent reviews of various sorts at the same time, to really find out with different entities in the public, other agencies think about the study that we've gone through so far, and the recommendations that we're preparing to make. So I'll reflect on the details of those different reviews as sort of our next steps, because that's where we are today. We undertook public and agency review as part of the NEPA and SEQA process. Just as recently as July through the beginning of September, our public comment period closed. So that is one key critical review that we've gotten on our draft recommended plan. I will show you the draft recommended plan in just another slide or two. The next steps that, I think I might have jumped. There we go. So that May milestone in, just, just a couple of months ago, was where we got the affirmation, we call it the tentatively selected plan milestone. That's exactly what it is. We've tentatively identified a plan from a Corps perspective that we get through reviews, we have sponsor support, non-federal partner support. The anticipation is we finalize the document in response to comments as appropriate, and we send it to Congress for consideration for authorization of a project. So that milestone occurred in May, and then we were able to move on to initiation of our concurrent reviews, specifically, public review was one of the first ones that was initiated. We also undertake a review called Agency Technical Review. That is an, and, and a review conducted within the Corps of Engineers, but by other districts across the country that are not at all involved in development or conduct of the study for West Sacramento, so that we can get an independent, but still understood, core technical perspective to make sure that we've just, you know, followed our various regulations in an appropriate fashion. We also undertake policy review by our headquarters. They have responsibility for application of policy in our projects and studies, and so that is a review that they undertake. That is underway currently. We also undertake something called Independent External Peer Review. This is something that the Congress created for us, I think it was in Word of 2007, which is, is just very much that. It's a review independent from the Corps by professionals in the type of, with experience in the type of disciplines that are part of conducting a study. And we really just see if they think what we've done makes sense. That review is also underway. And really, we're now just waiting to get comments back from some of these various sources. We're assessing the response, the comments that we did receive as part of the public and agency review. And really, from here on out, it becomes addressing those comments as appropriate and getting to our finalized document. The next steps that we have, our next core milestone is in January, scheduled for January. It is referred to as an agency decision milestone. This is part of our newer process. Basically, it's our opportunity to go back to our Corps headquarters and say, all right, everyone has undertaken their reviews. This is what the different review teams think of the, the project that we're recommending. And we're letting them know whether or not it's fundamentally changing the recommendation that they agreed to in our last milestone, just in May. And the idea is going into that milestone, we're in our final run-up to being able to submit our final report. We go then after the agency milestone to what's called the Civil Works Review Board. That is a face-to-face meeting with the partners involved in Washington DC to our Corps headquarters, where we are presenting our district's recommendations. At that point in time, we will have our mid-level headquarters, South Pacific Division, which is located in San Francisco, they'll have endorsed it. And it's really for headquarters' decision-makers to decide whether or not we've met all of the requirements. We will know going into that meeting what our prognosis for success is. After that process, we are gaining permission to undertake final NEPA review, where we will note, put notification in the Federal Register of the, of the Corps' intention to make this final recommendation to Congress. And it also triggers a review of a draft, what we call chief's report, which is really just the accumulation of a, of an investigation of this nature. It's, becomes the document that ultimately does go to, to Congress for consideration for authorization of a project. And that would be the next step after the Corps has completed a chief's report. We do send it through additional administration review, first with the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works, and also with the Office of Management and Budget. That's all about developing a recommendation from the complete administration to Congress. And then Congress will be able to consider the report for authorization in a future Water Resources Development Act. Not sure how many Rs it will have. And then, once it's authorized in a Word, it could be considered in annual appropriation bills to be funded. We do have the ability to continue on into the next phase, which is design phase, before we receive authorization for construction. So that does enable us to continue proceeding. At this point in time, I do want to identify sort of risks to the schedule. They really become very focused and narrow at this point in time. It comes down to anything that's revealed to us through any of these concurrent reviews that maybe takes us by surprise. And then, we, we do have ongoing consultation under the Endangered Species Act with our sister federal resource agencies, National Marine Fisheries Service and the Fish and Wildlife Service, US Fish and Wildlife Service. And we're there at this point contemplating and reviewing the draft reports, and we expect to hear back from them as to whether or not they think we're satisfying those requirements. Their, National Marine Fisheries Service in particular is very busy with a lot of different, different projects. And so just resourcing challenges there have been a bit of a hang-up for us. But we're, we're working through those. You all have been briefed, I think, fairly recently on the Southport project, the early implementation project. Part of that project's, part of the general reevaluation report that we're undertaking is acknowledging that the local government wants to move forward on some risk reduction features in concert with the state of California, and would like to be considered eligible to be credited for some of the costs that goes towards that project, if the Corps ultimately determines that there was federal interest in the project that you've undertaken. So one of the recent good milestones was with release of our draft report, our draft DIS, you were able to execute the memorandum of understanding with the Corps to be able to move forward on that project, and have it be considered eligible for credit, if the Corps decides that there, determines that there's federal interest in it. So I'm pleased to tell you that the draft recommendation that we are working on finalizing does include Southport features as you've defined them, essentially as you've defined them. And we have a preliminary determination of federal interest in... them, and we have a preliminary determination of federal interest in those features. Again, that's all subject to sort of the reviews that we're undertaking now and responding to the comments we receive on it as appropriate, but that's where we are today. So to reflect for a moment on the features of our tentative recommendation, it is fundamentally 50 miles of improvements, 50 miles of levees improvements in the area, along the Sacramento River, along the Sacramento Bypass, along the Deepwater Ship Channel, the Port South Levy. It's color-coded, I'm not sure how well you can see it, but there is erosion protection in a number of areas along most of the Sacramento River, and a bit along the Sacramento Bypass Levy. There are some, and that is evidenced by, or indicated in the green color. The red color indicates levy raises. Along the Sacramento River, there's a little bit of extent that would have some levy raises, probably on the order of magnitude of just one or two feet, really just kind of topping off the elevation to be consistent with the remaining portions of the levy that are there currently, as well as on the Deepwater Ship Channel on that West Levy, just a couple of places where we want to level out the height. And then there are some that are actually broader-scale raises, and that is really along the Port South Levy. We're talking about four to five-foot worth of levy raises there. And then the Port North Levy, we're actually looking at a flood wall because of just sort of constraints working in that area. When levees don't fit, flood walls are an alternative that we can look at. And then the blue line indicates seepage instability work, and that is the majority of the work needed along the Sacramento River West Levy. And predominantly, it consists of seepage instability improvements to the existing levy structure, except for in the South Port portion, which is a setback. There's room to do the setback there, and it's a better technical fix, it's more cost-effective. I will point out, there's also some seepage instability work and some raise to that South Cross Levy at the bottom end. And if this project is authorized and implemented, it would bring that levy into the federal system, and so you'd effectively have, at least for the Southern Basin, the Southern portion of the study area, a federal system surrounding the area. And so just a note about sort of the other planning efforts that are going on in the broader region, you know, we're aware and involved to varying degrees, and I can tell you that this project that we are identifying as a tentative recommendation is consistent with the overall regional planning efforts. In fact, really, the recommendation that we're tentatively making is really a key way to implement portions of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan for the urban area. Mr. Nagy will go ahead and give you a more detailed discussion of the regional planning effort, but I'd be happy to take any questions on the GRR and where we're at at this time.
At this point? So just asking on the flood wall at the port, what is that, what is that, what does that look and feel like? Because you have, at least on the graph, and recognizing the map is just a conceptual at this stage, but it runs right through the port terminal, on that, what is that, what is that, what are the implications of that in a physical sense?
I'm going to look to my team just to make sure that they've got a ready answer, and otherwise I'll attempt to answer that.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Dugan, the lead planner.
Oh, yeah, Andrew, there's about 5,000 people watching us at home, you know, so they can't hear you if you're not at the mic.
Right, and the particular case of the flood wall, that's going to be in the land side of the port, kind of parallel to the railroad tracks on the land side of the port. We felt that there were too many constrictions trying to build a structure through the port for operability of the port, so we chose to put that flood wall behind on the land side of the port. And it'll just be a concrete wall of, you know, three to four feet in height.
Oh, three to four feet, okay.
Right, yeah.
That's helpful.
That's why, Andrew.
And the risks that you had identified, are those, are there risks to the next, I forget what the next, the decision point, is that the agency decision, is the agency decision point, is that dependent on marine fisheries and other areas that you had identified risk, or is that a longer-term risk?
It could be a risk to the next milestone in January of 2015. If we have yet to receive real feedback from a key agency like Saint Imps or the service, that would mean we really didn't know what everybody thought about the project, and we wouldn't be able to fully report that to our headquarters. There'd still be risk that there's some comments coming in that would, you know, materially change the project potentially. My hope is that we will know what their thoughts are, if not having finalized consultation by that point in time, at least we've got a solid indication. And we have actually started to receive feedback from them. They would like more information about the project and how it would be constructed, how it would be implemented, how it would be operated. So right now, we're in the process of assessing their requests for additional information to see what we think we can provide, and we'll have a better sense of probably in another month or so.
Okay, thank you.
No question, just a couple of comments, and that is, the GRR is, I'm sure the council's really aware of, is a very, very important document. It's the document that really sort of controls the Worda, and that the Worda is us getting reimbursed for expenses pertaining to flood protection. And I know the mayor has gone back to Washington DC and talked at length with a number of people. We've, I've done the same kind of thing here locally, and I know Chris Ledesma has done the same thing when we went on back with cap to cap. So it's a very important milestone to hit, and I guess the frustrating part for me is it takes so damn long. It just takes a long time to get all this stuff through. And we are the front line, so to speak, of flood protection. I mean, we've raised taxes, we've asked the community to vote on taxing themselves for flood protection. We've done a lot to sort of lead the charge, so we can have this happen in a timely manner. Now, we're in a drought, and it really seems like it's sort of stupid to be talking about flood protection. But at the same time, it will happen. Something eventually is going to come down the road, there's going to be an event that puts our levy system at risk, and we need to make sure that we have done everything that we possibly can to protect our community. It's very important for me to see the Corps also look at the plans that West Sac-Safca has produced, because some of them has been controversial. We've got the South Port Levy and the South Port portion of our community, there's a number of property owners that are affected in things, and so when the Corps also says setback levees are the best fix for flood protection, it really raises not only my comfort level, but I think it raises the comfort level of the community at large. And so I just want to thank the Corps for moving along and at a snail's pace, but moving along to make sure that, long-term, our levees are fixed. Thank you.
Yeah, just to, because we'll have Mr. Nagy in a moment, but I agree with all the comments that Mr. Kristoff's made. I would say, though, that we, I thought this would slip 16 or 17 more times up to this point than it has. I mean, there's a million ways for this process to take longer and to go awry, and it has definitely been longer than we would have all hoped and liked, but it's, you know, just adjusting after a little bit of time in, you know, in this world, adjusting for what I expected, we're right, we're actually early. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the work of the Corps, the collaboration of the Corps with us and with DWR and all of our other partners through lots of issues simultaneously. I mean, it seems like in some ways, the actual assessment and design work is the easiest. I mean, it's dealing with the crediting and all the vegeta, the millions of other issues that are, have been gigantic distractions, but we've been caught up in national issues have been, have threatened to pull us off course over and over and over again. But we're here, and October 2015 Chief's Report date is, assuming we can stick with that, is a very, I mean, that's a good, that's a very good pace of progress, given how we started. And so I really appreciate the Corps' commitment and their flexibility at key points, their help, you know, their looking the other way at key points while we did some other stuff to try to make things work, and also our partners at the, you know, at the headquarters and in the Pentagon and the White House who've been trying to help as well. So it really has been a collaborative process, I know, a challenge for everyone, but it really is important. And it's, it is important, you know, we talk about this a lot, it's critical for getting the appropriations, so the federal government will pay, you know, a non-trivial share of the cost. But, I mean, that's just shorthand for us, because we're working on the numbers, it's really critically important just to make sure we get that project right. I mean, we've got a, you know, crackerjack, you know, flood manager and some great flood consultants, but we, I mean, this, this is our first time doing this project of this scale, and so we really do depend on the expertise and the rigor and the 5,000 external reviews and everything else that the Corps goes through, because this is no joke. I mean, we have to get it right for public safety, and it's a half a billion dollars, and we, of taxpayers' funds in a lot of different forms, so we have to do it right. So the GRR, it is about making sure we get our federal contribution, but it's also about making sure that we all build exactly the project that's going to protect, you know, protect in the maximum extent possible the people and property of our community. So thank you for the partnership. All right.
Thank you for the remarks, and I would also like to thank the WASAFCA team, they've been wonderful to work with and a big key to the success as well as the state. Thank you.
Mayor and members of the City Council, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to present the status of the Regional Flood Management Plan to you tonight. My name again is Eric Nagy, I'm with MBK Engineers, and we're consultant to WASAFCA and lead consultant for the Regional Flood Planning Management Effort. The intent of my presentation tonight is really to cover three primary topics. That's to outline the significance of the Regional Flood Management Planning Effort, to outline in pretty brief order the results of the first phase of that flood management planning effort within the region, and third, and probably most importantly, to outline the consequence that it has to the community and why it's important to the community that you're an active participant in that regional flood managing, flood management planning Just a little bit of background, Hurricane Katrina certainly shook a lot of the nation in terms of flood management policy, the status of our flood protection infrastructure, and how we view flood management generally as a public, as practitioners, and as policymakers. And as a significant result of that catastrophe, the California Legislature took some pretty significant action in the form of a suite of legislation that was passed in 2008, largely headlined by the Central Valley Flood Protection Act. That act called for a system-wide plan to be developed for the Central Valley, and in 2012, the Central Valley Flood Protection Board adopted the first version of that plan. What's maybe as important as the fact that the legislation called for the plan, I think it's more important to recognize that the legislation requires that that plan be updated every five years. And so it creates this living framework within which the local flood management agencies, the state as a flood management agency, and its federal partners sort of continue to evaluate flood risk in the valley and consider how to reduce that risk over time. The 2017 update of the 2012 plan is well underway, and the 2012 plan, because it was the first iteration of such a large request that had been done in recent time, it really provided largely a framework for planning, flood management planning in the Central Valley. The 2017 update to that plan is much more ambitious and seeks to include not only basin-wide feasibility studies under development by the Department of Water Resources, which look in greater detail at the system that we have in place and how to improve it, but it also seeks to adopt a conservation strategy whereby we do flood management planning more holistically and as better stewards of the environment, if you will, than we have historically. And finally, it seeks to incorporate more acutely the local perspective associated with flood management planning and operations and maintenance of the flood system that many, many local jurisdictions are responsible for. The Central Valley for the Regional Flood Management Planning Effort was divided into six regions, of which West Sacramento is in the Lower Sac, Lower Sacramento Delta North Region. The intent, one of the primary intents of the Regional Flood Management Planning Effort is to create an incentive for coordination. The historic model has been for individual flood management agencies at the local level to coordinate individually with the state of California and individually with the federal government in terms of improving their own flood risk situation. The Regional Planning Effort is really designed to create a forum and incentivize coordination across those local agencies within a region for the purposes of trying to identify a common vision and create an understanding that the similarities far outweigh the differences. There's certainly strength in numbers, is, I think, really what many of the regions have found in going through the first phase of this process. For the Lower Sacramento Delta North Region, we delivered our final report to the Department of Water Resources on July 21st and held our final public meeting in August. The plan represents a collection of flood projects that have been identified by the local flood management agencies in the region. The total number of projects is a little over 100, and the cost estimate associated with that portfolio of projects is a little over $2 billion, not insignificant for a region of our size, certainly because of the urban improvements and development in our region, that figure is skewed, not in terms of number of projects, but in terms of investment of that $2 billion in the urban regions. As Ms. Kirchner pointed out, the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program and the recommendation of the West Sacramento General Reevaluation Report are included in whole, wholly consistent with the recommendations in the Regional Flood Management Plan. In addition to a portfolio of projects or physical improvements that could be undertaken for the levy system or the flood infrastructure in the region, the Regional Flood Management Plan recommends some other activities in terms of ongoing engagement with the state, with other local agencies, with other flood management regions. And an important outcome of the planning efforts that have occurred to date is recognizing that the critical importance of ensuring that the local perspective manifests itself in the 2017 update of the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. That was the genesis for Regional Flood Management Planning, was to develop that local perspective. And really, from this point forward, it's, it's important to ensure that what has been developed as that local perspective actually makes its way into the 2017 update. And so from this point forward, that's certainly going to be a large or significant focus of the next round of Regional Flood Management Planning. One exciting development is the concept of an Integrated Water Management Plan for the Yolo Bypass and Cache-Sloo Complex. As I'm sure all of you are aware, the Yolo Bypass has become the apple of many folks' eyes, a lot of different ways that project proponents have envisioned differently utilizing the bypass, that its paramount purpose is fundamentally flood protection. And how do we integrate those objectives in a way, in a very... And how do we integrate those objectives in a way, in a very defined landscape that allow for modernization of the flood system in a way that's more compatible with the other objectives that we need as, as a state? West Sacramento, in times of flood, is essentially an urban island, and the city is flanked on two sides by bypasses that serve as regional flood management infrastructure. The, to the degree that the community is, is defined by those levees, is protected by those levees, makes it certainly critical that the community remain engaged and proactively involved in the regional flood management efforts that are underway. I think this perspective reflects that the best, the best defense is a good offense. Certainly, the Wasafka staff, the Wasafka Board, the city has been proactive in engaging in flood issues over recent memory, and I think those, that engagement, the expertise that has, that exists here in the community, is paying dividends in terms of the city being viewed as leaders in flood management policy and in regional, the development of a regional perspective and vision for flood management in the Central Valley. With that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Questions? Greg, do you have anything else?
No, that was it, unless the Council has any questions about the flood program in general.
Just a quick comment, and that is something Eric touched on. We touched on it at our Safka meeting. And it's imperative on us, especially the Council, to continue to emphasize to Greg and the Wessex Safka Board that the bypass is something that is absolutely critical. There are potential pitfalls, and I think that each time that the issue, as far as the bypass, comes up for some kind of changes or some kind of upgrades or downgrades or whatever you want to call them, that we express our concern and we express our views. So, but it's going to be very important to keep in close contract with our, contact with our, with Greg and his staff so that things don't fall behind, things don't fall through the cracks. And sometimes when we are discussing these at the Council level, we may have a pretty good idea that pops up, and we need to, to make sure that we at least give direction and give Greg those comments so that they can feather them, they can, they can make sure that, you know, things are moving along fairly well. And one of them would be the notch. I mean, it'll be something that we talk about as we go further and further along, but, and does repairing the notch really help the hydrology to the bypass? Or does it put in some additional restrictions? Quite frankly, I'm not sure of that. Everything that, that I've read and tried to follow as far as that goes says that the hydrology is better. But we have to be very careful what happens in the bypass, because if fish and wildlife or if fishing game, if there are additional trees planted or additional shrubbery, elderberry beetle stuff, you name it, anything can happen. And that's not a good thing for the bypass, because it starts to restrict flows. So we need to make sure that we just sort of stay on top of this. We need to make sure that we tell Marty, his staff, Greg, and his staff that there are some issues. And of course, we need to make sure we coordinate it with the professionals out there. I mean, I think they're doing a very, very good job. And so we're, we're well along in the planning process, and I, I think that we will be served very well. Thank you.
Mr. Kristof? Other comments?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks again. So I was interested in January, just because January is the, is the time when I have the most direct audience with the White House and the Secretary of the Army, so the extent to which we, you know, if, if stuff starts to go awry by then, or even if things are going well, I would appreciate getting a complete update at that stage, just before the, the end of January period. But certainly agree with all the comments that Mr. Kristof has made, and the, and the, we have worked so closely with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and I, I know I presented a million other workshops, and I know our staff has been and our consultants have been at every single meeting of every, and every public workshop, and our partners at Yolo County, same thing. So it's no surprise that it's integrated together, but that was really important to accomplish, so job well done. Right, if there's nothing further on it, thank you. Oh, we've been asked to adopt the resolution that supports the Regional Flood Management Plan, so is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Endine, second by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turned on. That motion carries, resolution's adopted. Thank you very much. We're gonna jump a little bit on the agenda. I'm gonna take item 12 out of order, because it's getting cold and some people here are in shorts. And upon the conclusion of item 12, we'll go straight to item eight. So item 12, unless there's any objection.
No objections.
All right, item 12 is Consideration of Presentation Regarding the Police Department Bicycle Enforcement Program. Chief Donald.
Mayor Kabaldin and members of the City Council, good evening. I come with props. Actually, what I'd like to do is, as you are well aware, on the 19th, this Friday, we're gonna have a press conference, speaking to a number of different things related to the bike-friendly city that we all enjoy here. But what I'd like to highlight tonight is the bike program within Wessex Police Department. That program is really predicated on support from Mr. Tuttle, and I really appreciate that. And I've got a group of really great folks here, both sworn and volunteers alike, that we, I just wanted to highlight here today. But that said, our program is really bifurcated into two groups. Our sworn component, we have a program that is, speaks specifically to crime fighters on bikes. And they're really good. They're very competent, very capable crime fighters. But I want you to emphasize, I want to emphasize that our goal here, over and above our ability to address the criminal activity that, you know, exists in our city, and to do so in a pretty creative and efficient and effective way. But it also is an effort on our part to reach out to the community. And we want to get, I want to get our officers out of the car, face to face with the members of the community that we serve, and we find that that works remarkably well. I also have a Volunteers in Policing Program, a VIP program, which we started here, and that is, they support and they enhance the police department, they're force maximizers. And they are also not only members of our community, awesome folks that we are very pleased to have associated with us, but they also are force maximizers and reach out and yet again provide a face to the community that, you know, I just think is really important that the, that our police officers engage with the community we serve and that the community recognizes us as one of them. With that said, I'd like to introduce Martha Griffin over here on my left, and she's our volunteer coordinator, and she's been great in doing that, and helping us with our entire volunteer program, not the least of which is our bike program, and also with Officer Jason Mahaffey, who's gonna take the microphone and carry on. So, Jason?
Thank you, Chief. You need members of Council, Mr. Mayor, Jason Mahaffey, I'm with the Police Department. I'd like to begin with a tremendous thank you to Mr. Tuttle, who's been a huge support in our bicycle program, providing us equipment and all the support we need. The development of these programs began with Chief McDonald's arrival in the city in July of 2013. He's been a huge advocate for bikes in the city as well as the bike program with our Our mission has been a combination of community relations and crime fighting, as the chief said. We've been highly successful in crime fighting in the city. We're able to get out of our cars, we're able to go to places in the city where cars can't get to normally, where the police department isn't unable to patrol, because we're on our bicycles. They have an advantage of giving us a view of the city that most police officers don't get to see. It's been a tremendous help. As far as the community relation side goes, it's humanized our officers to the public. I've noticed, in my personal experience, citizens approach us a lot more, talk to us. We have a communication on a more personal level with the citizens while we're out on our bicycles. We first deployed in November of 2013. Since then, we've had numerous successful operations, numerous arrests, numerous citations, hundreds of citizens contacts since November. We've effectively deployed to many parts of the city, including Broderick and Bright, the Washington District, the levees on the northeast side of the city, including the Broderick Boat Ramp. We've also deployed out to the Clarksburg Trail and parts of Southport. We've been a very mobile team. We can get to any part of the city within minutes, and it's been very successful. We've also provided patrols to city events, including the fireworks show New Year's Eve on the Riverwalk, and most recently, the cyclocross event also on the Riverwalk. It was an honor to be part of both of those. We currently have seven officers. We added two as recently as last week, who just finished their school. We had four bicycles that Mr. Tuttle purchased for us, that we're grateful for, and the police department just provided two more. We brought them tonight to show the Council. The goal is to increase to 10 officers. We're currently, all of our officers on our team work normal patrol. So when we, it's more of a part-time job for us. We're deploying on overtime or when staffing allows us to. We'd like to addition, add three additional officers and three additional bikes. Our ultimate goal is to have a full-time bike unit. I think it would serve the city well to have us out there on a full-time basis, serving the community, crime fighting as well as building that community trust. The chief also spoke of the VIP program, the volunteers. They've been committed to developing partnerships with the community. They patrol the city streets, the bike trails, the Broderick Boat Ramp, parks, as well as special events such as the farmer's market. They report suspicious activities to patrol officers and assist in crime prevention. They receive formal training in bicycle safety, CPR, and patrol procedures, and they report suspicious activity directly to police officers working patrol. The police department currently recruits through social media and other media outlets. The hope is to bring our VIPs to 20. We currently have nine volunteers, all within this community, five bicycles, and the ultimate goal is to bring the VIP program up to 10 bicycles. At this time, I welcome any questions or comments.
Questions?
No.
This point? Or comments? Are you gonna introduce your team, your colleagues?
Stand up.
I thought I said introduce, not excuse.
I have the pleasure of serving on this unit with some of the best officers in our department. They're highly motivated, highly skilled, and when we go out, we're highly effective.
All right, great. You don't need to stand, stay standing while we have our comments. You're welcome to if you want to, but, so, so comments then. Mayor Protem Johannesen?
Yeah, I think this is really a great program. I've always been an advocate of getting you guys out, guys and gals, out of your cars and into the public and building that personal relationship. You know, it's, it's shown really, it's night and day, from what I've seen and talked to folks about, you know, police relationships in town, and, which only builds to build more confidence in reporting crimes as they happen. So I'm really pleased to see that you all, particularly the VIPs, that you're taking the opportunity to do this. And then also just getting on your bicycles, I think, as we start having more folks on bicycles and, and just the visibility that you'll have out there. I know there's some areas that are, you know, still people feel a little bit concerned about, and to have, you know, law enforcement on bicycles, just even the eyes and ears on there, I guess it's good to build confidence that these are safe routes to go as we have more and more people using these as commuter routes and, you know, at all times of the day. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Lutazma?
Thank you. I just want to echo Mayor Protem Johannesen's comments, and thank you for your work. This is a great development. I know early in the year, Chief McDonald talked about having more volunteer policing and having more feet on the grounds, and I've witnessed, you know, your presence at the farmer's market, and it does create a more community-friendly, approachable police force, and I just would urge you to continue that work and it makes the community, I think, appreciate what you do and your accessibility to be able to, to not just report crime, but also to give you information that might be helpful to other areas of our, of law enforcement. So, again, I just applaud you for the work and continue to move forward.
Ms. Endine?
I think I'm echoing what my colleagues have said, but I want to thank you for your service, and also, I too have noticed the, at the farmer's market and then at the cyclocross event, I think there is, it is nice to have, have the, the group of you protecting the city, but also interacting with folks at, at this kind of different scale. So thank you very much for your service to the city, and thanks to the chief and to our city manager for working on this program.
I would just comment that I, I sure do like the idea that, you know, you're citywide. You're in Bright, Broderick, and, you know, West Sacramento, Southport, so, so forth. I think that that, that's really good, and I think it raises the comfort level of the people that live within our community. I know it's not easy for police officers to get out of the car. There's a certain amount of protection, a certain amount of, of whatever you want to call it that goes along with being behind the wheel or, or being in that automobile. And so I, I just appreciate the high visibility that people on bikes, especially police officers on bikes and, and our VIP program. I think it's something that will benefit the community well. So, thank you.
Our new class of VIP folks is, is a lot younger.
Yeah, sure is.
The first generation of VIPs, or maybe I've just been here a long time or gone all the way around. Yeah, I, I obviously agree with my, my colleagues. I think this is, it's, policing is much, much more than the, the moment of protection itself and the, and the empowerment of folks, the sense that there's eyes always around that's not just yours, but that are others that know you and that feel like they can approach you. It just encourages everyone to, to feel safer and to act safer and take the appropriate steps on their own to, to, to be safe. But also the, the signaling in the community of having all of us on bikes, you know. If we can put the water treatment plant folks on, on bikes once in a while, right? If we, if we say it, it's in our general plan, where, you know, our, our general plan assumes that, you know, this many, percentage of our population is going to be on bikes or in buses, we, we need to be, we need to be demonstrating that, that, that's, that that works, that that's possible, and that it's great. And so I, you could see that at some of these events, certainly. The, the folks understood that, they got that, and they saw themselves in the police department, humanized, and, and they saw, they see folks that live in the neighborhood with them, like the VIPs, and it just, it goes a long way. It's not everything, right? We often, I, we get a lot of this, this question, well, why don't, why don't everybody go on bikes? And why, or why don't, why don't police officers just ride on bikes and play basketball games? And we also need the, you know, we need the full range of what police departments do and have to have the tools to accomplish. This isn't about diminishing the other forms of law enforcement that we have to undertake in the city. We're, you know, we're, we want to have the best police department in every aspect in our community. This, this, this program goes a long way, and it only does that because of the leadership of the department, you know, senior officers who, and, and managers have taken this, taken this program on, and then folks who have stepped up to say, yeah, I want to be a part, I want to create a new kind of policing in our community. So thank you for, for making that happen, especially to the volunteers. So thank you for making that happen, especially to the volunteers. Thank you for being pioneers, both in the policing and on bikes. You're making a huge difference already in our community, and I think we're all, we're all excited about the prospects that this brings. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Rapp. Thank you, Councilor. So now we are going to return to the regular order of our agenda and to item eight, which is consideration of increasing the construction contingency for the Mike McGowan Bridge project to include the South River Road pavement rehabilitation. And although the agenda item that's in our report is correct, the agenda summary that, if you're watching at home or if you just picked up a piece of paper at the front door, the agenda summary has the, has an incorrect recommendation. I'm assuming Mr. Zambia will restate the actual recommendation the staff is proposing this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. On August 6th, staff brought to your attention some of the potential issues that may come up upon the completion of the Mike McGowan Bridge. One of the issues that we brought up was the poor pavement condition of the South River Road between Marina Greens Drive and the new bridge. Staff proposed rehabilitating that section of the roadway. One of the concerns raised by the council at that time was the potential cut-through traffic in the Southport Gateway neighborhood. Staff at that time asked the city's traffic consultant to do some additional analysis on the potential cut-through traffic, and on September 3rd, the traffic consultant came to the council and presented some of his findings. In summary, he stated that the cut-through traffic may be, cut-through route may be shorter, but it may not be faster because of the slow speeds involved in that route. And in summary, he said there, the cut-through traffic will be minimal. There will be some cut-through traffic, but it will be minimal. And on the same days, the council directed staff to come up with more options. So today, with this report, staff is presenting five options, and I will briefly go through those five options, and then at the end, I would correctly state the recommendation as we go along. So option number one, thank you. Option number one, which is also the staff's recommendation, is to do a thin overlay of the South River Road in that project limit between Marina Greens Drive and the new bridge, and do some, do the striping and shoulder backing, and also post reduced speed limits, and also post some, install some signs, steering, share the road with bicycles, that type of signs. And also, we are proposing that we do a traffic count on the Marina Greens Drive before and after we open the road. And if the traffic counts prove that there is a significant cut-through traffic, then we can install some of the traffic calming measures that I'm going to talk about in option two and three. The cost of this option is estimated to be about $200,000. That does not include the additional traffic calming measures if we have to install them. So going on to option two, option two is to do the road rehab as we, as I mentioned in option one, but in addition to that, install about four to six traffic speed bumps approximately in those locations shown on the screen. The exact, staff will be working with the residents in that immediate neighborhood and decide the exact location of the speed bumps, but in general, it could be in that area. This option will increase the emergency response time. The staff report incorrectly says it will decrease the emergency response time, actually it will increase the emergency response time, and it could cause damage to the fire equipments. The estimated cost of this option is about $245,000. That includes the pavement rehab and the speed bumps. Option three is to do the road rehab like in option one, but in addition, install the no right turn and no left turn signs at that intersection, as shown on that, the screen in front of you. The downside of this option is that this will also restrict the residents living in that neighborhood right next to Marina Greens Drive, it will also restrict them, so they will also have to go around to get to the bridge. And also, this option would require frequent police enforcement to make sure that they are not turning right or left during that AM and PM peak hours. The estimated cost of this option is the $200,000, because the cost of the signs itself will be, will not be significant, but the cost does not include the police enforcement. With that, we can go to option four. Option four is to do the rehab as in option one. However, open this section of the roadway only for bicycle and pedestrian traffic by installing bollards on both ends of this section of the roadway. Currently, the, there are wide cracks on this section of the roadway, so we have to do the road rehab before we can open this for bicycle and pedestrian traffic. The downside of this option would be the emergency responders would not have access to this road, and also, the bridge will be open to the bicycle and pedestrian traffic. In addition, the vehicles that are turning eastward on South River Road will also have, can use the bridge. But because of the low volume of traffic going through the bridge and that neighborhood, staff thinks that this area would be susceptible to loitering and vandalism because of the low volume of traffic. So estimated cost of this option is about $220,000. Option five is, option five is to close this section of the roadway to all traffic by installing gates and fences on both sections, both ends of this section of the roadway. Again, emergency responders won't have access to it, and again, because of the low volume of traffic, some other issues will come up, like vandalism and things like that. So those are the five options that we have. Staff is respectfully recommending that the council approve option one as described and approve an increase in construction contingency of $200,000 for the Mike McGowan Bridge project, and authorize the city manager or his designate to issue contract change orders and issue monthly progress payments up to the additional contingency amount of $200,000 for the Mike McGowan Bridge project. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions? Mr. Ledesma?
Thanks for the presentation, and I guess I have a couple of questions in that. So this is, this is, the subject is, presents a very, I want to say, a quandary for me because, and for us, because we're, we've invested in, and we're using state dollars for this, for this bridge, for the purpose of goods movement and getting some traffic off of Jefferson Boulevard, which was the always intended goal of the Southport Framework Plan. And because the bridge is coming first before the Village Parkway does, it presents that quandary of what to do. So, and my perspective is skewed by what I've seen in the past in our city when infrastructure, certain infrastructure projects get, come online before the next link does. And I'm thinking of Marshall Road, which wasn't improved to its current standards, but Bridgeway Island was, and we, to try to force traffic back out of the just completed Southport Parkway, we put, I would say there were gates and road barriers and I think the other.
Attack dogs.
Along, along Martinique and other, other roadways that go north-south onto Marshall to prevent residents from using Marshall because it wasn't ready. And it just, I am very careful about our ability to, our notion that we're going to stop people from using a road or not, and trying to force people to use a certain road. On this, on this tricky one, it's, I mean, it's just obvious. Option one is, the one you've laid out is the one is, that has no issues. There's no cons to this, other than the risk of, to the neighborhoods, the adjoining neighborhood, that there would be a, that there could be traffic, people pile on in. So the rationale that we're using is that people aren't going to do it because it's not, their, their traffic engineers have determined that. It's just going to be too much time out of them.
Right. It's not going to be faster going through that.
It doesn't mean that, I just want to be real about this, because I am supportive of having the roadway used, but I don't want to, I'm cautious of saying that that, that our engineers think that it's going to increase, the time to take to use it is going to increase. It's going to be more than using Jefferson, therefore they won't use it. If there's an accident on Jefferson Boulevard, they will use it.
Right.
If there's a train, they will use it. So I don't want to go down the path of, of, I don't want us to kind of have rose-colored glasses that everything's going to be fine if we open it up. But I don't have a solution that says, you know, how do we mitigate this? It is, it's obvious that if we put in speed bumps around the perimeter of the neighborhood, it will damage our fire and police vehicles. And, or I think a fire vehicles, and Chief Martinez is looking at me and shaking his head, but we have those in other neighborhoods. And, and, and so again, I'm trying to understand the staff report and, and, just in the sense that there are, there are limited good options here. I think something, I think we just have to be real with that. And I'm, right now, I am leaning toward, I'm supportive of option one because I think there has to be traffic. I think we just have to be prepared to, that should traffic come about. I also want to protect that neighborhood from, I don't want, that neighborhood should have a right to use it, they're closest, and it makes sense for, especially on the folks on the north end, if they can get to that roadway easily. And it's not going to be perfect because it's not, still going to be, what, how wide is that roadway?
It's going to be two 10-foot lane plus two, minimum of two-foot shoulders.
Right. So it's a very narrow lane and nothing that, again, it does, it presents its own traffic issues, and I think people will, will, you know, as they get to, I think that will be incentive enough to kind of not use them. But again, I'm just trying to make sure that, that these options are presented. Let's, I'm trying to be very real about what the possibilities are. And I'm just, and I'm mostly concerned about our ability to use that roadway and to use the bridge to some facility, to some capacity. And again, the options presented here are just, I'm, again, I'm leaning towards, towards one, but I think we need to be prepared to implement a two or to go, you know, we just have to be prepared for that. And because I think it's just, I'm going to say we're kidding, the human behavior will dictate how we respond, and they, we don't know, generally speaking. So again, that's, that's sort of my input early. I appreciate you guys coming back and giving us, kind of jumping on this, but again, I just want us to go in eyes wide open on kind of what we're doing, because we thought road barriers along Marshall Road would keep people off Marshall Road, and they moved them. People would just, I think, I see some city staff remembering this, they moved them, and they used Marshall Road. So again, that's, that's my comment, and I appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Just, before getting to the content of it, because I've been a staffer too, and I just want to give some advice, because the, it's, it can be tempting when you really want a particular outcome to load up the analysis in a particular way. And I get it, it's the, and so we start to, you know, that's when we start to see stuff, and there could be loitering, and this, you know, I can invent these sort of scenarios ad nauseam. Often one had no downsides, and some of these other ones had, you know, I was waiting for, and a meteor could strike. You know, it was like really digging deep for any possible argument that could be used against any of the other ones. And the challenge is, this is a complicated issue.
Right.
And we're trying to find a solution, and I need, at least for me, I need to, I need to believe that you, like, you're approaching this with eyes open and from the perspectives of the issues that we raised last time. The summary from last time was, you were, you had a professional consultant who came in and said, you know, there would be no impact in the neighborhood, and somebody else said maybe that wasn't true. So here we are with our options, and we're recommending based on that. We had a whole conversation about that, somebody else was us, and it just isn't, it's really important that you, when you're tasked with this sort of assignment, that the analysis and the alternatives and the options are presented in a way that are, that reflect the facts and the, and give us the full degrees of freedom. And when one option is, when one option is loaded in with loitering and, and everyone's going to die and the fire trucks won't get there and whatever, and then the other one is like, there's no, nothing wrong with this option, the one that I always wanted from the beginning, it just starts to sound, it sounds iffy. And I'm, it's not a problem per se, but I really needed your help on this one, because, for all the reasons that Mr. Ledesma said, there's no, none of these are good options, and they all have their problems. And so it's a lot, I would feel much better sorting them through if I felt like the analysis that I got back was recognizing that you don't want to hurt this neighborhood, and that is like a very prime importance, and you're skeptical of that study, then, then what? And it doesn't look like that's, that's the position that's been taken on it. So I don't, I don't want to belabor that. I mean, you're all, you're all, you know, highly, highly professional folks, you're doing the best that you can, I appreciate that. But in terms of these sorts of analyses, helping, helping for me to make a policy call, it's much easier if I can, like, just look at it and say, okay, they got it, they got what we were trying to get, at least what, they got what I was trying to get at. They understood that, they're dealing with that, they're grappling with that, and here's the best that can, that can come back. It just doesn't feel that way. Because I'd like, you know, if there's a way to get to option one, I'd like to get there too, but it just, it felt like the deck was stacked in the, in the presentation. Having said that, I, I'm still worried about option one and the, and its impact in that neighborhood for all the reasons, all the reasons that we've talked about before. And the reversibility question also, because, you know, once you, once you do something and then you take it away, people get very upset.
Right.
More so than if they never had it in, at all, like 100 times more upset. So we just have to, and we're really talking about such a short period of time, and one of the things that we learned on Marshall was opening up the neighborhood before opening up Southport Parkway. We've affected those traffic patterns forever, forever. I mean, folks, they started to use Marshall anyway, and they're still on it, despite the traffic consultant saying, no, 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 everyone's going to use Southport Parkway because it's faster, you know, it's less time. They don't, they don't use it anyway. So what we do in terms of the traffic patterns that we create in this period has durable impacts in the, in the neighborhood and in our overall circulation pattern. I mean, a simpler approach to me would have been a combination of option one and three, not option two, because, because we have a long list of neighborhoods that want traffic calming already, and we have the emergency response issues with traffic calming, and saying to a neighborhood, look, we're going to, you're going to have to swallow that we're going to put more cars into your neighborhood, they just won't go as fast as you might be worried about, but it's still going to be, there's still an impact. It's not, traffic calming does not solve the impact of having cars, you know, a significant number of additional vehicles in your, in your neighborhood with your daughter playing on the street, with your kids biking, doesn't solve that. It just makes it safer with traffic calming, but it's not like that just wipes it away. Whereas, whereas if you, if we implemented three, then you actually are removing that traffic from the neighborhood. So if you started with one and went to three, you would, you would be able to solve that problem in a different, by solving the problem, not by making life not so painful for the victims of it. The problem with that one plus three approach is the psychology, because if you open up the road and then you come back later and sign it for a no left and no right turn, you have a significant problem. That's not an insolvable, unsolvable problem, right? You can't sign stuff that says, you know, this is, you know, you put the sign up, you say, but, but, you know, not, you know, except for now, right? I mean, there are ways to deal with that, but you, so you could, I mean, I could certainly imagine if we, you know, if we thought this through or looked at some other places, or talked to some nudging and cognition consultants about how you could portray those signs that essentially say, look, we're, it's open, it's going to be no left turn, no right turn if people start cutting through. So you're declaring that from the beginning, it's kind of in the same way that we do at the Urban Forum, we say, look, this is going to be a commercial building someday. It's fine right now, but it will be a commercial building someday, so reduce the likelihood that the feeling of takeaways are happening. But I feel like that's a better response to the problem than just slapping some speed bumps into the neighborhood while requiring them to accept additional traffic capacity overall. If you couldn't do that, then four is still my preferred, the threats of loitering notwithstanding, is still my, my preferred option. I don't know what we're going to do when we do, when we take the road off the South, South River Road, off the levee, and we have all that with no cars on it, what kind of loitering we're going to have to deal with there, or what your recommendation might be. But I still prefer four over an approach that does- recommendation might be. But, but I still prefer four over an approach that doesn't, doesn't legitimately deal with the issues of the, of the neighborhood. So I haven't made up my mind, but I, but I could see a path that would be a one and a three as one potential way to solve it. Or one with a three as a contingency.
Ms. Sandin, I know you've been thinking a lot about this.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the work to try to come up with some alternatives, although I was kind of struck, similar to the mayor, about, about what the constraints could be. I, I thought of, one of the options would be the council may choose a different option. And my thought on this is actually, if we were to do a no, a stop, directional stop is actually at the point of entry to that neighborhood, where the directional sign would be there. So that neighborhood could actually flow out and others would just continue on as they normally would, probably going to Jefferson. So that, that's just another option. So it doesn't affect that neighborhood. There, there don't have to be speed bumps. Because there's that one, I think there's one entry point and you kind of go around and then out the side. So that would be just something, just one other, one other option. And then every, others could continue, could actually take, others could actually use the route off of Jefferson as they probably normally would. And that, that neighborhood that we're most concerned about could get some protection. That was, that was just another, that was alternative three of council making a different option. Yes, alternative six. I was trying to come up with, you, I think you heard me at the last meeting, I, I have a concern of us not having any access to the bridge once the bridge is completed. Even if it's pedestrian bike, car, whatever, I think it would be a mistake for the city not to have some access to this new, this new linkage. So for me, when I was reading the report, it was either one, two, three, or four, and I couldn't live with five. But then, as we're discussing this, I was trying to, trying to come up with something that could work still for the, to protect that neighborhood. Traffic could flow around and just another, another thought to throw out.
So, so where were you, were you, in terms of the entry point, what are you, are you thinking, what street is?
Well, there's a, sorry, I'm just trying to, I can't see it on my copy.
Is it Sansom or?
Suppose, I mean, I, it's off of Gateway into that neighborhood.
Okay, I think that, next to the park?
Sansom, yeah, right. I think that is the only route. And there's only one in and out of that neighborhood.
Yeah.
So if, if folks there couldn't, if hypothetically, they weren't breaking the law and they were looking at the sign and they went straight through, they wouldn't cut through in the morning. They'd actually still have to go out, out and around. And that would be what they'd have to do. It just doesn't, it doesn't push the traffic through that neighborhood.
So your, your suggestion is to-
Like a local access only?
Well, right. Because we'd be doing it, we'd basically, you'd be putting a stop sign at the other end saying, okay, you're in this neighborhood, even though it's right here, you've got to go all the way down and around. So, so it would just be pushing that directional thing to the start of the problem. And people would have to pass by, you see that, see what I'm saying? It is Sansom. It's right there. And that, in the morning, you couldn't make a right. Or I guess, if you're coming, if you're coming west to east on Gateway, you couldn't make a left. And if you're going east to west on Gateway, you couldn't make a right at certain times.
So that would impact the residents living in that neighborhood too, if they're?
No, because they, they could-
If they want to come back?
I think you're probably, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, enforcement is-
Right.
Putting enforcement challenges aside for a second, I have to come back to them. But, but a local access only restriction is more what you're, because if I, if I leave my house on, on Hill and Healy Lane and go drop off my kids at school and they come home and I can't get back in, because you've said no more, no left turn, back into the neighborhood, then that's a problem as well.
Yeah, that's a problem. I'm just trying to come up with, just something that's-
And they're, and, and we already know none of them are perfect. So, I mean, even, I mean, a local access only, I mean, I hadn't thought about it earlier, but I mean, it might be enough of a nudge. I mean, yes, you could still violate that. And we're not going to post police officers sitting there checking IDs. But it's not an unusual signage mechanism that can, that conveys, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. And some folks will still do it. But it, I mean, it may, it may be one way to, to reduce the impact. I don't know, I'm just still hoping to hear from Mayor Protem Johannesen, who has lived in this neighborhood. And they say, hey, you know, Mayor, this is not a problem.
I don't have this item.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah. Question I have. When will Village Parkway be bunched through?
Eighteen, roughly eighteen months after the bridge opens. The bridge opens in December of this year. The Village Parkway will open in summer of 2016.
And it's going to take that long because, I mean, it's just a street. But, I mean, so it's going to take that long because of what?
So we are currently in the environmental phase, so, and then we need to do the final design. And it's supposed to go to construction in summer of 2015, roughly nine months from now. And then it takes about a year to construct it.
Construction.
C.C. Myers.
Well, I mean, that's, that's really the key to this whole thing, is how soon Village Parkway can be done or completed. Because then, all the traffic alleviations and all the traffic, either Jefferson still gets quite a bit, but some less. And then Village Parkway is going to pick up the rest, go across the bridge. Okay, I was just a little surprised there. Couple things I think really need to happen. One is that there needs to be signage or something on Village Parkway Drive telling the residents that we are going to be putting this road through. We, we are working on it and we are going to. But they need to understand that we don't have this other configuration or this other issue forever and ever and ever. They need, I think the people really do need to know that we are doing something. Something's going to happen with Village Parkway.
Right. When we, when we get to the south end of the bridge, there will be a sign saying, project under design, and it'll be constructed in 2016 or something.
Yeah, whatever. I don't care if you have a map or whatever it is that shows it getting on to the new bridge. But if I can't get Village Parkway constructed sooner, I guess our best option really is to go with option one. So that'd be the one that I support.
We're trying to figure, trying to, trying to not get to a four, a five, one, 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 one split on this issue and get to a conclusion, because I know it's important that we-
Yeah. And I was, and I was just thinking, because obviously you're, we're, five options are probably giving us too many choices. And now we're mixing and, mixing and matching. But, but, but I, I agree with, with Councilmember Sandin and the mayor and Mr. Kristoff about the, the need to create that psychological barrier. Because I think that's what we didn't have in, in, in the early 2000s with Marshall Road and, and an ability to, and, and about what that was. And we weren't real with ourselves. So I think if we're going to open it up, we need to let the community know that this, this is, I agree, as much as we start to affect folks' driving patterns, an understanding that, that something will be, the, the, the thoroughway would be coming in 2015?
2016.
Thank you. 2016. We just have to figure a way to manage through it. And I, like I said, I'm not married to this speed bump. I'm not, I get the Chief Martinez over there, he's glaring at me. But, but I, we do need to, to, to protect that neighborhood as much as possible. And I, and I think be prepared to, to change or just let, let the residents know early on that this is an imperative, we're, about how, how we're going to manage this traffic. Because we, we don't have the ability to expand that little, that little stretch of road. And we don't have the ability to add more cars to that neighborhood. Speed bumps would make it slow down, but there's still an impediment on their, on their neighborhoods with more cars, as the mayor pointed out. So I, I am, whatever solution, signage, where are we? I think we're all, I think we're landing on an option one, but with option three, which is restrictions to local access only, neighborhood access only, or whatever we're going to.
Yeah, let me put something out there, see if, try to see if we can put something together. That if we did option one, sign Sansom or, you know, some appropriate alternative as local access only, and sign the left turn from, onto Marina Greens, also local access only, and then establish, pre-establish a trigger point for what, for some number of vehicles that are in the traffic counts, you know, increase in traffic count. And if we hit that trigger point, then we, then you, those, those signs both change to, the left turn only, the left turn local access turns to no left turn and so on. But that we set a trigger point in advance of what that is. And then be able to communicate that in City Lights and elsewhere, that this is, this is, this is, this is the system. And I personally think the local access, the access thing could, could work well enough, along with, you know, your consultant from last time. You know, maybe the combination of, of that, that psychological nudge will overcome, combined with this, this, the time issues that he was describing, it'll overcome this issue so we don't have to go to, to it, to another level. But I think have, committing ourselves in advance that that is what will happen, is, makes a much stronger psychological statement to, to folks driving, if we communicate it effectively, if we don't, if we don't keep that just to ourselves. But so, so that they only, we wouldn't be making any capital changes other than, than, so we'd be doing option one in terms of your capital request, installing two signs, and then setting a trigger point for the installation of, of, you know, no, no right or left if we get to that threshold point. I'm not, I don't, I don't have a proposal what that threshold should be. So we're going to trust you guys. Come up with the one that's, you know, that's, that's, that's real, that would, that would feel like an impact in the neighborhood. So it should be more than two or three cars, but it shouldn't be 1,000 vehicles before it gets triggered. I don't know. Does that capture?
Yes.
Kind of?
Yes, it does.
So with that, are we, are we done? We need to make a motion on this. I'm going to approve what the mayor's outlined, or move that we approve option, a combination of option one and option three as outlined by Councilmember Sandin on, on signage for local access only.
Right. That's not option three. That, it's a different signage.
Is it different? Okay, is it different? So-
It's option one with the, with the local access signage, with a contingency for option three that would be triggered-
Thank you.
-by a, by a traffic count.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask.
Can I, can I just get clarification? Your recommended action includes the other recommended actions as well, correct?
Yes. And in addition, approving the increase in the construction contingency and authorizing the city manager to, or they need to issue contract changes as, as outlined in. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Dennis, are you, are you clear on where the local access only would be?
Yes. On both sides of the neighborhood, we'll put local access only, and we'll establish a trigger point. We'll do a traffic count before and after. If the traffic count exceeds certain trigger point, then we will change that to option three, which means no right turn or left, which is option three.
I would ask in addition to the motion is that when you get back and scratch your head and regurgitate all this and put it into action, that we have some sort of summary back to this to make sure we're all on the same page with what this was. And some memo to-
And we can work with the traffic consultant in terms of an appropriate trigger that would represent an increase in cut-through traffic, which at the moment feels to exist.
And then cut it in half.
Given that consultant, cut it in half after that.
But, yeah, and then we, then we just need to communicate this for, you know, as when we do the big ribbon cutting and the rollouts of all this, and we, and City Lights tell everybody about these new transportation, so we have to, we have, we have to communicate this at the same time. So.
Yes. And that will be part of it as well. So, okay. Motion is-
All right. If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Same.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem Johannesen abstains. Item, thank, motion carries. Item nine then is consideration an award of contract with cooperative purchasing agent HDAC by for acquisition of fire apparatus and adoption of resolution 14-42 declaring the city's intent to reimburse itself from attack exam financing for certain expenditures made or to be made in connection with the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain capital improvements.
Mayor, members of the city council, yeah, the item tonight deals with the procurement and financing of fire equipment, fire vehicles. And since the, the, the staff report is, is fairly detailed in terms of the background, I'll just go through the recommendation and then answer any questions you have. So what we're proposing is to finance the acquisition of, of these vehicles, this equipment, over a, a 12-year period. We would amend our U.S. Bank equipment lease that we, we use to, to purchase the Ascela computer upgrades for the city and the mobile data computers. So it'll be our, you know, third, third financing through that, that master lease. Over a 12-year term, it allows us to spread out the, the lease payments and the acquisition in a way that has, has less impact on the fire department's budget. And then we can get a favorable interest rate, again, about 2.62%. And so that, one action will be authorizing a total of financing of one point, roughly 1.49 million. And then of that, that's financed, we are, we're asking you to approve the award of a contract for purchase of three, three of the vehicles, three of the engines. And again, we'd be going through a procurement, through a competitive or cooperative purchasing agent that's consistent with the city's policy for acquiring vehicles. They're able to get pretty good deals because of the volume of vehicles that they buy. So we like going through these, these agencies. And so the total amount, there's a correction in your recommended action, it's, it's correct in the rest of the report. But we had a reduction in the price of the three vehicles at the last minute. So, so it should, should read award a contract for the Pierce vehicles in the amount of 1,256,843. So with that, then you have also, just a recognition by the council, that there's other equipment to be purchased in the amount of 235,000 that will come later. It's going to take about a year to get these trucks manufactured and delivered to the city. And, but we still want to arrange the financing of that other equipment in the amount of 235,000. So together, that gives you the 1.49 million total financing. And then the last action is resolution 1442 is what we call reimbursement resolution. So if there are any expenses incurred, you know, now before the, the contract is in place with, with a lender, those expenditures would be eligible to be reimbursed from the loan proceeds. So again, no, no detailed presentation on the body of the report, but I can answer any questions you have.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt the recommendations as outlined and also adopt resolution 14-42, which declares the city official intent to reimburse prior expenditures from loan proceeds.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. Item 10 is successor agency consideration of resolution 14-50, authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds to refund bonds of the redevelopment agency of the city of West Sacramento, as long as net present value savings from the refunding is at least 3% of the par amount of the refunded bonds.
We said we wouldn't be back, but we just keep coming back with these. So, this is actually an action that the successor agency authorized last October. And at the time, we, we were able to refinance all the 1998 series bonds and a large portion of the 2004 series. But there was about 8.45 million, which didn't make the 3% net present value savings. So we left those, those out there unrefunded. The market came back. We're now coming back to you with a very quick turnaround to refinance the remainder of the bonds, very good savings, about a little over 7% net present value savings, another, you know, 40, 42 to 44,000 annually in savings. So it'll put the total savings of all the refinancing from, from, you know, the deal that closed in January and this deal at about 312,000 total. So very nice savings. So anyway, again, you're just going to authorize the bond documents necessary to, to close this transaction. It's a different bank. We're working with Western Alliance Bank. The, the one that closed in January was BBVA Compass. But we did another deal with Western Alliance on the CFD 12 bonds. They really like our credit and they like working with the city. So we should be able to close this by September 30th.
Any questions? Any questions? Discussion? Is our motion?
Move the recommended action.
Second. Right, it's been moved by Mr. LaDesmond, seconded by Mr. Christoph. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blumberg. That brings us to item 11, which is a public workshop on the transit-oriented development strategy, initial analysis, initial analysis report for the Washington District.
Good evening, council. I have a brief presentation for you, some introductory remarks, and then I'm gonna turn the item over for discussion. I just wanted to provide you with an update that I won't be showing the cross-sections, but I have them if we want to discuss them. And then this presentation will not be discussing parking because we haven't concluded our analysis, nor will be discussing in great detail the C Street Bridge, but both Chris and Mike Lukin are here if that topic comes up. So I just wanted to brief you on what to expect. Thank you. So as I said earlier, I have a brief presentation that will touch on some of the high points of the transportation component of the draft TOD strategy that's included as attachment one to the staff report. The attachment reflects a staff's thought process as it's tackling this problem and our interim work products that not only fulfill the sustainable community's grant objectives, but also articulate the path for amending not the vision of the Washington-specific plan, but the standards that are responsible for implementing that vision as it relates to the transportation and circulation elements of the plan. The Washington-specific plan recognizes that infill development can be challenging. It also recognizes that the street grid is an asset. And it describes a vision that recognizes the best of what is, such as the architectural context, as well as the historical nature and the existing street grid, and describes what should be, what should be happening with the vacant lots and the compact mixed-use development that would turn this waterfront neighborhood into a vibrant community. The, it was in recognition of this vision that originally staff pursued a very conservative approach to meeting the transportation demands of the existing and planned development by requiring that all analysis considered staying within the existing built right-of-way. We wanted to see if we could accomplish the objectives and validate the vision through this process. Unfortunately, that initial approach did not yield the desired outcomes, and so it was abandoned. However, it provided valuable insight that shaped the draft strategy document before you this evening. And it provided us with insights that informed, the staff needed a working framework for discussing the transportation objectives, that held a common foundation, a common language where we could discuss the desired outcomes, any trade-offs that needed to be made to meet, meet those outcomes, helped us identify and catalog road world constraints and identify opportunities for improvement that further implemented the vision of the specific plan. Our first step in this thought process, this exercise, as a result of our initial attempt, was that we recognized that we needed a street hierarchy that was not based on the size, as it's originally described in the specific plan, but on function. And we looked at council's priorities that are described in this strategic plan and realized that streetcar needed to be our number one order street, our highest ranking street, and that all efforts that we made had to support street ridership and the land uses that were associated with streetcar. So that was our first order street. We've analyzed some preliminary engineering to confirm that the route proposed works. The second order street that we looked at was in recognition of two of the special district overlays that are in the existing Washington-specific plan, the Third Street retail commercial corridor and the historic neighborhood. So we recognized that all effort that was made into improvements on this street had to recognize that vision language that was in the specific plan for this corridor. Our third highest order streets were these east-west connectors that connected in the riverfront to the community, either through pedestrian or bicycle access, and also provided important access out of the neighborhood because the neighborhood is bound by physical constraints. After we concluded our street hierarchy, we recognized that this was not enough. We needed to go further in discussing sort of what we envisioned would happen on every street. And as we looked at these streets, we couldn't have 100-foot right-of-way. We didn't want another tower bridge gateway on C Street. So we looked at what are the different uses that are important, automobile, transit, bicycle and pedestrian. And using a variety of planning documents such as the Grand Gateway Master Plan, the Washington-specific plan, Bridge District Specific Plan, General Plan, Bike Ped Master Plan, et cetera, we identified different types of priorities and put that into what we call a combined street-layered network. All of this really means that when we were sitting in meetings trying to discuss, do I give up my bike lane? I would like it to be six feet wide with a two-foot buffer, but I can't fit parking. We had a tool in which to be able to discuss, what do all these planning documents say should be the priority? And it gives us a way to visualize why when you see that there are maybe proposed widenings, why those widenings are being proposed and why we can't always respect the existing built environment. We also looked at places where the street grid isn't functioning properly, either by external forces, such as the C Street Bridge, or things that we would like to see happen, like the West Side Rail relocation, fixing the intersections that are on Fifth Street that we heard about through all of our public meetings, staff, you know, staff heard complaints from the public about. So we looked at these two focus areas. And since the specific plan does articulate a desire to recreate the grid and reinforce the grid, in addition to the cross-sections, we looked at how can we improve the street grid? This is something the council's seen before when we discussed the West Capitol Connection Study, which was just one example of the type of analysis that's being done, that's being summarized at a very high level in the TOD Strategy Document. And as a result, we have a sort of a schematic base map that has new proposed cross-sections, a streetcar route, new connections at those two focus areas around West Capitol Avenue that reflect improvements that may occur with the Grand Gateway Master Plan or associated with other redevelopment projects. And then improvements that may happen to Second Street that may facilitate a park strategy that was brought before the council or in support of development associated with the C Street Bridge. And so this is, what this is, is sort of accumulation of the work that we've done to date. And we're checking in with council to ensure that we're heading in the right direction. And we're asking that you give us some feedback and some guidance so we can move into sort of preliminary engineering and modeling and other sort of validation work to see that this new approach to implementation for the specific plan vision is in line with the council's expectations. That concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Katie. Questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Christoph.
Question. In looking at this, it looks like the train overpass. It doesn't, it looks like it's closed to traffic. It'll be only bicycle or pedestrian?
The, there are two phases.
Uh huh.
The near-term phase that's proposed. Excuse me. Did I apologize? Allows one-way traffic to occur and it has enhanced bicycle pedestrian. This is preliminary engineering that shows that one-way travel is permit, can be permitted with enhanced bike and ped access on the southerly lane. So existing access to both the Railies Annex Building, although I, I think that's not the case anymore, but that building as well as Welcome Grove can continue. And then the long-term proposal that assumes either the West Side Rail relocation has occurred or that improvements have been made to allow connectivity at Seventh Street would allow for the Grand Gateway Master Plan to be implemented. And then there would be no need for vehicular traffic along that one-way path along West Capitol Avenue.
So you, we think that one-way or one-lane traffic will be okay under the, going under the railroad trestle?
That's what our initial analysis has indicated, yes.
That's worse than Village Parkway. Okay, thank you.
It's local access only that.
And it resolves the, the failing intersection that's occurring there now. It's, it's, it's at level service F and this would bring it up to an appropriate level of service, like level service C.
The loitering analysis will be next week, Mr. LaDesmond?
And is the chief still here? We're talking about speed bumps too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the map we're on, and you're just gonna, I'm gonna ask for your indulgence because the map, I'm looking at my iPad and this map is very hard to kind of see, especially the legend in the corner. What is going on, which is about at a record-low font size that, I was testing even my reading glasses. But the purple line represents, can you walk us through? And there's numbered spots along that, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand this.
Okay, so the purple line represents the proposed streetcar route
That's what I thought.
for the future phase. The blue line with the arrows that go from City Hall to the riverfront reflect sort of a Paseo-enhanced bike ped connection from the Civic Center to the riverfront. You'll see another bike ped enhanced connection, sort of reclassifies D Street next to the rail. The gray areas represent sort of new public right-of-ways to reflect those changes to the existing street grid. And the yellow areas reflect opportunities for abandoning existing right-of-way and consolidating it for development. And the green area that's along the riverfront reflects the park that was previously presented to the council on August 20th as part of the park strategy.
Okay.
So the, what you're anticipating is that obviously the streetcar line, the north-south route would wind back to, from Fifth over to, is that Fifth Street or Third Street, back to Fifth Street and back around towards the new, the foot of the, the new C Street or whatever we're calling it, a new bridge. And the, I guess where, you know, from activating the, the neighborhood and and allowing, I guess what you're saying is, is having, with that as the main and the hierarchy, keeping the, the streetcar transit accessible, winding it back around the Fifth Street would allow folks from Railies to walk over to a station, the folks from the neighborhood to the, that's the west of Fifth Street that have a, have a station where they can jump on the streetcar. Is that sort of the, when you say hierarchy of transit, you're trying to make sure that that's the precedent? That, that's the one, the centerpiece of transit orientation?
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's the centerpiece of, of the neighborhood as well as the centerpiece of that segment of road. So for example, if we're having to look at sacrificing a parking space for an enhanced transit stop that allows for maximum ridership or creates wayfinding or other things that make, you know, ridership more enjoyable, the idea would be that we would recognize that streetcar trumps all these other uses.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. President Johannes.
Yeah, thank you. Katie, yeah, I like, I think the alignment is, is good on the streetcar. I think we've seen from some of the work we've done on the streetcar, that's the two or three block radius around that. I think it's the biggest bang for the buck. And to move that westward two blocks just basically extends that to the huge number of additional blocks that, that could take advantage of that transit. One of the things, have you looked at, when you look at alignment like this, have you looked at the impact of property owners? The reason is I received a call today from someone who saw this map and said, you're taking my land, you know, that, that type of thing. So we don't really see the impact on property owners on this, and which is obviously gonna be a consideration as we move forward.
So to answer your question, we have been reaching out to the property owners. We've had several public meetings. We also had a by invitation only meeting to the property owners that are both on E and F Street to discuss streetcar with them in addition to the improvements that are being proposed on both those streets. We did hear some concerns from some of the property owners. Primarily, I believe the concerns were based on misinformation, thinking that they were, we were putting in light rail or thinking that it was going to be like the main line. And every time the main line goes by, their house shakes. So they're thinking, well, you're just moving a train closer to my house. We did have an opportunity to discuss with them that it can, has the potential to increase property values, that it won't affect their parking, that we're working very hard to maintain on-street parking. That was another concern that we heard from one of the property owners on E. So we, we think that we've provided those property owners with every attempt to sort of educate them on the benefits of streetcar. But I think only time will tell, and I believe the first phase of streetcar will really help win those hard-won run, you know, converts, bring them over and let them see that it's, it works in traffic, it's like a bus. It will not be disruptive to their quality of life and it will in fact make their property much more desirable to the next generation of people who want to live in their home.
Yeah, just, I mean, we've been here before in terms of this type of planning that impacts neighborhoods. And the more outreach you can do, the better. And try to address these concerns as soon as, as soon as you can. I mean, obviously, there's going to be some issues that are more difficult than others, but you definitely don't want to blindside the residents, particularly if it's, you know, there's some taking that's involved.
So the, this, I mean, the, earlier today, the Sacramento Republican announced that they, you know, their preferred site and the site that they're gonna buy is in the rail yards. And, and I tweeted about it, that if you don't know where that is, it's, you just go over our, the new bridge and it's, and just go straight down the street for eight blocks and you're there. And as I wrote that, I realized it's just a reminder how close that all is for this neighborhood. So this is not, and it reminded me, we're not making, this, it's not just an update of the Washington-specific plan because the Washington-specific plan really was put together from the, from the notion that the Washington neighborhood was an island. And it didn't interact with anything else. Whatever forces of change were gonna occur were really from within the neighborhood. And that's no longer the case at all. When I was in Louisville a couple of weeks ago, there's a city across the, across their bike-only bridge, a bike and pedestrian-only bridge, the size differential's about the same. And there's a huge amount of stuff going on just at the foot of the bridge because people in Louisville are crossing over and they want to eat and shop and whatever. There's not, there's not a lot of people moving in, but, and they have a zone for that. But it's having a gigantic, that, just that one bridge, there aren't cars on it, having a huge effect. The rail yard, the, the density of activity and development that's happening at the rail yards, the uses are gonna dramatically affect the, what's viable in this neighborhood, what the pressures are, both good and bad. And, and so we really have to take that into account. The other thing that's happening, which is that, you know, the, the bridge is no longer going into downtown. Today's downtown. And so that is also gonna have a sense of, a change in the sense of, of location for this neighborhood, which has been defined to some extent by its connection to I Street and the train station. And that section of the urban core is no longer connected that way for cars. And so to me, those, those are two important pieces of context that, that have drive both transportation system playing and everything else, but also like what's possible and how fast, right? The, the pace of change that we thought about in the original Washington-specific plan, well, whatever we can make happen, let's just, you know, we'll try to push this a little bit, but we're already seeing, you know, a lot of folks wanting to build in this district. And that's gonna dramatic, if people actually believe, start to believe that the rail yards might catch up to the Bridge District or, you know, at least, you know, move a little bit, then we're gonna see the same effect there that we're seeing on, that the arena's already having on, on our development pressures. And so, so we don't have like two years to think this through, you know, we, and, and we have to have this sort of strategy that's, that's really real and really informed by that, the opportunities that that context offers and also by some of the challenges. One of those, as an example, is I, and I don't know, I wasn't here for the parks discussion, but I'm assuming we didn't talk about it then either, is we don't, the bridges are kind of out of this conversation, they're not in the Washington District, but they're, they, they should be. And what happens to the top deck of the I Street Bridge as both a circulation issue and as a parks issue, I, I think is a, that, that opportunity needs to be front and center for us. Now, there's, it's complex because the railroad owns the bridge. But, you know, having looked at this, this, this new bridge in Louisville, which they had projected, I think it'd have 5,000 people cross it a year or something like that. It's like, it's like 100 times their projections. It's been a huge thing. Or the Highline project. Or the Highline project in, in New York, in Manhattan, that reuse project is, you know, like internationally known for the success that they've had there. But the, you know, continuing some connection for the Washington neighborhood directly to the downtown core, even if it's, even if it's primarily oriented at pedestrian, bicycle and sort of recreational pace access, I think is incredibly important, not just as an amenity, but, you know, but to maintain the economic connectivity of that, of that neighborhood. Because even, even now, I think we would, we, in our, in our riverfront estimate, we used to think about pedestrian bicycle facilities as sort of nice recreational elements. But given the densities that we're building here and the kinds of folks that are moving in, and same thing on the other side of the river, and the uses that are happening, they're quite viable commute alternatives as well. So, I, I don't know whether it fits in here or in the parks piece or somewhere else, but I think for us to complete our, our work on the sustainable Washington community plan without attending to, to what that, what this bridge realignment means and what possibilities might be there in the street bridge would, would, would be a mistake. So maybe, you're probably looking at us, but I really want to encourage, encourage that. A couple of very, very specific comments. Page nine of the, of the full document, there, there's what I think is a pretty obvious correction that you might want to suggest to Farad Peers. The city of, the city of Sacramento logo, it should probably be us, right there on the right. And then just on the Paseo piece, the Paseo, the Paseo concept that we've, we've talked about, I think the Paseo is most likely to be thought of as a real Paseo if it's, if it's as, if it's as straight as possible. So this jog over, you know, to use the connection between the Ziegler Building and our, and our empty parcel, I understand that from a developer perspective, from a Paseo perspective, not as much. You're creating more of a, what's a trail then, than a true sort of Paseo where you might look, you might be standing, you know, on the current West Cablo Avenue and being able to look down and see, see the connectivity to the waterfront and to the, the region. You're creating, it's a different kind of facility than a true Paseo. I, I recognize the challenges, part of which we've already contributed to by what we approved at Capitol Yards. But I, the, the potential for, for something approaching a true Paseo between the river and the downtown, and our downtown is, I mean, that could be something really spectacular and really, you know, really amazing. So I, I would, I, I think you sort, you have, in these, you have lines that have both options, but it looks like since the trees are only on one of them, that you're really thinking of this jogging to the north for the Paseo. And I would just encourage us to, to, to have both of those options that are, continue to have both of them at our fingertips, if, if we're able to put the rest of a real Paseo together. And then my last comment in, is, is just, this, I think you're doing this, I think this is embedded here, but we're, I, to me, we're trying to accomplish two things with this, we're two, two stages in the sequence all in once. One is, is essentially, you know, a modernized specific plan approach to these issues. But those tend to be pretty aspirational. You know, we go and we ask Doherty, well, how many bike lanes would you like to have? And how wide should they be? And how separated should they be? And then we go ask, you know, the fire chief, how much do you need? And then we put it all in a plan, say, here's our plan. That's important to do, but, but I also, I hope what we're getting out of this process is the Katie Jacobson Bridge District approach, which is, okay, now, if we're gonna start building it tomorrow, you know, how have we value engineered this whole thing, you know, completely? How have we gotten this to the point where we could hand all of this to, if somebody came in and bought the entire Bridge District, we could hand it to them and say, okay, I mean, not the entire, the entire Washington District that wasn't already owned by somebody else, you can just go, right? That was part of what we were trying to do. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that that's what, that we've taken that eye, that editing eye, to, to our aspirations and our objectives, not to tune down what we want, but being as smart and surgical as possible in how to achieve it in ways that are more cost-effective and take advantage of the kinds of innovations and, and urban standards and stuff that, that you, that we, you know, really pushed hard in the Bridge District work. Mr. Ledesma?
I, I just had a quick question, looking at some of the, and I agree with all my colleagues and the mayor's comments about how we can turn this into an implementation plan or ready-to-implement plan. And I agree conceptually. I, I just had a question in, around the Fifth Street profile, which is on, I lost it, on page, sorry, my iPad's catching up with me. On page, it's in the appendix three, appendix A three. And, and, and this, I think that's right, I got the right one. Fifth Street, from Tower Bridge Gateway to E Street, and then below that, especially when it hits the underpass, the next page. So is the, envisioning a, because Fifth Street was, when I looked at this, that's gonna be the, that's the thoroughfare, from, even from the Bridge District coming through, it's the major light. Granted, we'll have the Paseo, kind of breaking it up. I just worry about that section of very wide thoroughfare and then putting the light rail on it. Not that it's not the right thing, because the underpass is there.
Streetcar.
Streetcar, I'm sorry. But in putting it, putting it there, when the street, streetcar, it, it wouldn't, you know, it, to me, it just, it just begs for narrower streets and to be accessible to, to, from both sides. And it just seems, that, that part just worries me. So I see that you, you've kind of, you looked at slimming down the, the car lanes, but is there other improvements that we need to be thinking about along, from the sidewalk profiles to everything? Is that what you're suggesting here?
So you've touched on a tricky issue that we're having with moving traffic north-south and accommodating streetcar, which is that if we make cars comfortable on Third Street, they won't go over to Fifth. But if we allow too much traffic to move, that they won't know how to integrate with the streetcar when it comes to that pinch point that's the underpass. And so we're trying to balance this idea that traffic has to move on both north-south connectors, and the initial traffic models that are coming out of the work that's being done on the C Street Bridge indicate that that's the case. They're not moving primarily onto Fifth Street as we would hope that they would and as anticipated in the Bridge District specific plan model. We have two alternatives that we're looking at now from a preliminary engineering standpoint, that one does put a section of Fifth Street sort of on a road diet and, and does bring it down to a three-lane section for part of Fifth Street from G to where a streetcar integrates, to allow streets, cars to transition and prepare for this interaction with streetcar and, and the underpass where it is very constrained. So we're trying to create, in, in, you know, parking to create buffers for pedestrians, bicycle lanes to allow for alternative routes. We don't have a good answer, which is part of the reason why the cross-sections are initial recommendations, because we, we can't really reach the optimal level of traffic operations because of the constraints in the built environment.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear you.
We can't reach optimal traffic operations because of the constraints in the built environment. And we're really trying to fit all of these conflicting needs into a fixed area that, by all rights, if we looked at the Bridge District as a model, would be 92 feet wide, would be 12 feet wider than it is now. If we just, we took that exact model of what's in the Bridge District, which is four lanes of travel, a turning pocket and bike lanes, which would be consistent with the bike ped master plan, we would need to widen Fifth Street in the Washington neighborhood. And I don't think that's the desire at this point, it would, recognizing that it's a built environment. And so we're dealing with these, these constraints. And one of the things we hope to do as we continue, as the council has indicated, wanting to have a plan that's ready for implementation, is to go through this validation process and identify as many fatal flaws as we can and articulate as many opportunity costs to the council, so they understand, you know, what are the trade-offs that are associated with their options that will be available to them, such as perhaps widening the right-of-way or accepting less than optimal traffic operations, or accepting more traffic on Third Street than they would otherwise prefer. And we're, we're not quite there yet, but when we come back for approval of the TOD strategy, we will be. And this is just an initial sort of check-in point for you to begin to see the challenges that we're facing in, in this infill area.
And, and I guess we're, and, and thank you for articulating your, I don't want to say frustrations, but your challenges here, because I'm just looking at it and, and, you know, I think of where else the streetcar is going, and it's, and it's current planned route even through West Sacramento as well as in Sacramento, and trying to maximize the, the stops and the areas that it's around, it's certainly gonna activate economic development along those areas and investment. And if it's too, you know, not done right, it's just gonna be a, you know, kind of in the way. And, and secondly, I'm, I'm looking at Third Street between C Street down to where the turn, I'm not sure which street it turns over, is it F Street turns over, or E Street where it turns over to?
E Street's where a streetcar is proposed to turn to the non-Fifth Street.
Turn, turn west, yes. So in between there, and I know that the, the streetcar can't cross the rail, the railroad tracks, which is why we're going to Fifth Street. But, but on Third Street, you're right, I, I also want to make sure that that remains intimate and, you know, that even from where it currently is, along the, where the market is, the Green Thumb Deli is and all that, that, that just begs for just lots of pedestrian, almost main street sort of feel as people are walking north and south up from Third Street. The mayor's right, we, when we did the, about the excitement the Washington neighborhood has around its potential, because I went to the I Street Replacement Bridge, the first open meeting, and I think almost every resident in Washington District was there. And it was in Old Sacramento, and it was, it was more of a pep rally than an open meeting. And both council member Cohen and council member Hansen were shocked that all these West Sacramento showed up, just excited about the opportunity that it brings. And Katie, I know you were there, and we were just sort of floored by the excitement in there. And, but, but that's why this is so important, because they see the potential of that connection and, and how, we've, we've got to get that right. We've got to, as much as possible, keep that Third Street alive without a streetcar, in that stretch, and then make Fifth Street work so that people, it encourages the economic development we want. I know there's a housing project on the west side, there's public open parcels, I think in the parks plan you proposed even a park, a little small urban park in that area. It's gotta work and to make people feel like, oh, this is a, a streetcar stop. So whatever we need to do to sort of slow down traffic, and I'm thinking of some areas, I'm thinking of in Florida, I want to say in, I forgot my neighborhood, I'll show you a picture, but there, there was a stretch which is a thoroughway, and then it just slows down as it's going through the main street. And, and there's more shops and everything there. And they didn't have a streetcar, but it certainly was the area where a lot of activity, activity happened. And so how do we make that happen on Fifth Street is sort of a failure challenge and gotta get it right. So thank you for your clarification on that.
So one other piece of the transportation network that we, we have not ever considered before in plans like this is the bike share system. And so I'm curious whether or not that, that fits in this part of, in the TOD portion or, or, because there, you know, assuring that we've set aside the, or that we're thinking about, you know, where and how. The initial bike share plan, I think, anticipates three stations in West Sacramento, of which one is in the Washington District, it would be at Calstir's. But particularly with the new bridge construction, you could definitely see lots, and if we got the Highline project here as well, but you can see lots of potential there, but you need to think about it in advance to make it not super expensive to go out and tear something up or take somebody's land in order to create what is, doesn't require a lot, but it does require, I mean, it's, it's best done with a little bit of advanced thinking. And so I think if, if we, if we think about whether in the TOD piece or some other part of the sustainable communities work, integrating the bike share piece, that it would, it, it wouldn't be too difficult, given the, all the planning work that's already been done on the mainline stuff, and probably really smart investment of, of a little bit of time right now. So.
Yeah, I mean, Washington, the Washington District is closer to the new soccer stadium than the state capitol is. I mean, it's a, it's a, I mean, it's a remarkable change of place in a lot of ways. And that's at the farthest part of the rail yards. So it's gonna be, it's a big deal. Any other feedback for, or comments for staff?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bill Lowell.
William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. We talk about transit-oriented development. Well, as you know, I've been advocating for more homes to be built with universal design, thus allowing more people to live longer in their own homes. And so this would apply to housing that's rented out to the elderly and disabled and so forth. And while we're at it, I think we should reemphasize the importance of, well, this most recent action that now says on YOLO buses, we can't use those flip seats anymore for seating. And so that reduces the space for people like me and people with walkers and so forth. But what really bugs me is, I know this, I know this one much elderly lady who lost a leg, she gets around in a wheelchair, and they secure her wheelchair down, but she doesn't have a seatbelt. So all this was about protecting people from falling forward in case of a quick stop. Well, there's no seatbelt, this one-legged lady, she's gonna fall forward, and I don't see how that's gonna make it safer for her than it was for me. When I did that about 10 years ago, when they had to come to a real quick stop, and I flew forward to just behind the driver, I caught myself on that vertical bar. But why couldn't they just say, hey, if you're gonna use that flip seat in the front, you have to use a seatbelt? Otherwise, they've said, well, we've tried to apply that logic to people in wheelchairs and so forth before that didn't have it, but you can't make them use it. Well, if, if you can't, if you can't make them use the seatbelt that's there, then they should sign a waiver or something, there should be a waiver implied there that if they get hurt in such an injury, they shouldn't be able to sue YOLO bus or the city or whomever. If they don't want to play it safe, why, that should be their choice, but also they shouldn't, shouldn't open the door for them to sue everybody under the sun about it. But I think we've gone backwards in this most recent development, and they don't do that on the other side of the river. So I'm trying to figure out why, why we can't get it through their heads, these insurance companies that are requiring this, why, why they can't tell us why it's not just as safe for somebody sitting in one of those flip seats in the front to use a seatbelt and, and say, and then they turn right around and say, in effect, it's okay for somebody in a, in a wheelchair not to use a seatbelt. So why is it okay for somebody like that to be flipped forward when they've only got one leg? It just doesn't make sense. Maybe, maybe somebody could incorporate this in, in the redesign of the existing buses and the design of new buses. And lastly, I think we should have a better speaker system so that when, as the bus driver announces the intersection or stop or shopping center we're coming to, he doesn't have to compete with the noise of the air conditioning of the bus. And so I'll let it go at that, and maybe, maybe one of these days you can go around on one of those buses during the peak hour and, and see how, oftentimes now, on our side of the river, they have to pass, pass us up and we have to wait another hour for the next bus maybe. So I don't think we have to. I think we ought to step back and reexamine the situation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, then, if there's no further comments on this one, the council? We've already disposed of item 12, so we'll proceed to item 13, which is consideration of a presentation and discussion of ordinance 14-3 amending chapter 10.32 of the municipal code relating to bicycles.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Chris Doherty with Department of Public Works. The item in front of you this evening is a presentation on a amendment to the city charter of chapter 10.32 of the municipal code relating to bicycles. It's a fairly simple amendment. We are exempting the police officers, the new bike patrol in specifically, from the prohibition of riding bicycles on the sidewalk. And that is the entirety of the, of the ordinance amendment in front of you tonight, and this is solely to support the, the new bike patrol that we're starting off in the city. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Other questions or comments?
No.
But I'm, I'm supportive of the concept. I do think there's a- I do think, there's a couple of things that this tees off for me. One is we need, the department or administrative manual needs to articulate some rules of the game for this, because even police officers should only be going at pedestrian speeds on bicycles on sidewalks, except when they are in, you know, when their duty requires them to be, you know, in a high, in a high-speed chase on their bicycle, right? That it's tempting for folks to use the bicycle as though it's a bike lane, including for police officers. And it's both unsafe for pedestrians, even if, and it doesn't matter if you've been hit by a police officer or by anyone else, it's still very dangerous. And it also is, it sends the wrong message. You know, if folks see police officers riding at full speed or even medium speed on sidewalks when there's not something happening, just because it's convenient, it undermines what's already a very, very difficult bike education and enforcement challenge for cyclists generally. There's been a lot of debate in the region, well, not that much debate, there's been a lot of feeling in the region with my bicycle activist friends on the other side who wanted to, who, but we need to do something about cycling on sidewalks. It's not safe for pedestrians. And some of our most prevalent cycling on sidewalks is right next to where we've installed our best bike lanes. So it's not a question of not providing adequate facilities in many of these cases. So I just want to be careful that we don't undermine efforts that we haven't even started to deal with cycling on sidewalks and wrong-way cycling and all of that by having our officers and our volunteers, you know, modeling the wrong behavior. So the extent to which it's at pedestrians, and I don't want to change the ordinance to say this, but our own internal procedures should make it clear that officers and folks from the department on bikes are expected to be cycling at pedestrian speeds, except when they're doing, you know, when they're involved in a chase. So. Any other comments on this hotly controversial item? All right, thank you, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you.
So this will be returning at some future date for first reading as an ordinance. All right, council calendar, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to point out a couple items on the calendar. As we heard earlier, this Friday at 10 o'clock, we're going to have a media event celebrating our bike patrol.
And then on Saturday, it's the Gear Up for Youth Ride, the B.I.
Mike Dyke, Ms. Richardson. Did your mic die? Is your mic on?
Oh, I thought it was, yeah. Sorry, thank you. On October 11th, that is going to be the celebration of the fifth anniversary of the Arthur Turner Library. And the library has asked us to ask the council if there was anybody who would be interested in reading stories to some of the children who'll be attending. And if you are interested, you can contact me about that.
What was the date on that?
It's October 11th from 1:00. 1:00 to 4:00, I believe, is the celebration.
All right, any questions on the calendar?
And there's just one more item, not on your calendar, also, Jolo Brewery is going to have their ribbon cutting on October 21st from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., and we'll have that in your newsletter this week, too.
Okay, any questions on the calendar? Your mic was off during the Gear Up announcement, so I'm going to say it again, that the Gear Up Ride, the registration's online at gearupforyouth.org. I think we've got a couple hundred riders from both cities making the ride. This year, there's two, there's two levels. You can do the 40-mile ride, or there's a 65-mile ride for the folks who believe that biking on sidewalks is okay. So both options are happening. I believe Mayor Johnson is going to be here, so we'll see who's the fastest, if not the strongest of the mayors at the race. But it's not a race, so, you know, folks, if you're thinking about coming by, if you weren't, didn't make it last year, I mean, people will go whatever speed they want, and there'll be, I'm sure there'll be a group of folks who are out fast at the beginning. But it's completely a casual, family-oriented ride, and folks can take hours and hours and hours. There's no, it's not, it's not laser-controlled, so if you break off and decide after five miles that you're just going to go straight to the end and enjoy some yellow brew beer, that's completely appropriate, too. But it's, it's, it's going to be a lot of fun, and it's a benefit that supports way up in Sacramento and future-ready here, so it should be a great day. All right, city manager reports.
Mayor, councilmembers, Caltrans has a major project on Pioneer Bridge that starts on Friday evening, where they will be closing down to one lane on Pioneer Bridge and closing some of the adjacent ramps, including to the I-5 ramps, all in the eastbound direction. So we will put information in city highlights on that. They're expecting 30-minute delays as people come through the city on the eastbound direction. And then it was mentioned today in the earlier report on flood, the yellow rail line relocation effort, today got a grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration for $171,000. That would go to a consortium of the cities in terms of looking at relocating rail, and that would be, for our city, that would be the west side relocation effort. We expect to see an RFP for a consultant to do that technical planning work here in the next few weeks.
We got the Tiger grant, what about that one?
And we also got a Tiger grant, which was mentioned last week in the newsletter, 1.5 million for the continued planning of the Broadway Bridge, and thank you.
That's a huge, that's a huge deal, because it's, I mean, only, I mean, it's a highly competitive national program, only 72 winners in the whole country, no other ones in this entire region. And on a project, you know, puts the federal government a little bit of skin in the game on that project. And, I mean, from the last round of Tiger, I think we learned, they really care about this stuff, and they really want, they don't want to have any Tiger failures. So it's a good marker, it's a good external validation that this is a really valuable and important project, but also having the federal government put a little bit of money in and committing essentially at the highest levels of the department, because this stuff, the Tiger apps get reviewed by the secretary and the assistant, and the undersecretary. It's a good signal about our prospects for longer-term federal funding as well. So that was great. Thank you. Questions, city manager report, city attorney report, staff direction members of the council. We have no future gen item requests, so Mayor Protem Johannesen moves. In the standing seconds that we adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, hearing done, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.